Good evening, welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would remain standing for the invocation, Pastor Joseph Gastinow is here from Revival Tabernacle Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the honor to be here tonight, and we'd like to thank all of you that are serving our city. You're doing a good job, I believe, and we have a great city. And we want to wish you a blessed Christmas as we enter this time of the year. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you that we can be here tonight. I thank you for every individual that is serving this city. Lord, you came to be a servant, and we know we're blessed when we have a servant's spirit. I pray that you'll bless this city, give us peace, bless our police officers, fire personnel, all those that are laboring and working. Bless our leaders with wisdom, we pray, and bless this meeting this evening. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Susan, would you take roll call, call to order?
Mr. Stinson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
And Ms. Welch?
Here.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda, Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports. 5A is Approval of the Agenda. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda and move item 14A up. Let's say right below, after the approval of claims. State Senator Carol Blood is not feeling real well, and we're going to assist her by getting her item off the agenda so she can go home and try to get better. So, I will make a motion that we approve the agenda with, does it take two votes or one? Do I have to make amendment? I'll make amendment that we move item 14A to below item 6.
We can put them together.
Vote them together?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to approve the agenda with 14A following number 6. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Are there any items that the council wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Takes us to the amended agenda item 14A. Senator Blood, would you come forward, please?
Well, good evening.
Anything you want to say?
Yeah. Now, do you even have to ask that question? First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to come and speak real briefly on the Bellevue Farmers Market. We had, excuse my voice, another successful year. I was just telling Councilman Shannon that we actually had three businesses launched as a result of having the farmers market this year. Many of you know about OPK here on Mission Street, the great Filipino restaurant. Today, can you hear me? Today, DH Longhorn had their ribbon cutting. They are now providing their products in the GNC store in Twin Creek, grass-fed beef. And then NOD is the third, who has expanded to like 10 different locations. And so, we've gone from just being a farmers market to being a great vehicle for new businesses as well. We have mainly managed to do it on a shoestring budget while still generating tax dollars for the city of Bellevue. We've brought in different groups who have raised funds for everything from Alzheimer's to diabetes. And then we've collected food for homeless veterans and for the homeless shelter. So, every year, it gets stronger after a bumpy start, because we did lose some vendors to the flood. But I think we've got great vendors. Thanks to Green Bellevue, they have a presence there every Saturday. We're able to educate people on the importance of the farmers market and other issues that pertain to making Bellevue greener. So, it is my request that you allow us to utilize the park. To my understanding, we didn't have any complaints at all this year. And we always clean up after ourselves, and we try to be good stewards. And the market continues to be volunteer-run. So, the only people making money are the city of Bellevue and our vendors.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for all you do, and I hope you feel better. I'm going to read the, what we're talking about. Item 14A, Approve Request of Application for Privately Operated Farmers Market at Washington Park to be held on Saturday mornings, May 23rd, 2020 through, to and through, September 26th, 2020, with the exception of August 1st, 2020, due to Arrows to Arrows Space Parade from 6:30 AM to 12:00 PM. Actual hours of operation of market will be 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Are there any questions from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a public hearing?
Okay. Sorry?
No.
Slow us down. Alright, I'm going to open that up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against the farmers market? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and I still have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Any questions? Second was by Burns, sorry about that. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Blood. Moving to item number seven, Special Presentations. We have none. Eight organizational matters, there are none. Nine, Approved Citizen Communication. Nine A, Request to Address Counsel Regarding Increase in Salary. Harvey Wiltse. Mr. Wiltse, if you come forward and speak, please. If you just state your name and address, and just keep your topic to the 2% salary increase, that would be great.
Senate File 5, Senate File. Harvey Wiltse, 211 Martin Drive.
Sorry, Harvey, what was the Senate File? What's?
This has to deal with Senate File 3953.
Okay.
That was in the petition that I gave for the clerk. Do you not have that?
So, it's ordinance 3953 is what we have?
Right.
Okay.
Which has the 2%, 2%, 2%, and plus the 34 and 33, right?
What's the 34, 33?
33% for the mayor and 34% increase for the council.
Okay. The percentages aren't named, but the dollar amounts were, so, okay.
Okay. Well, that's what it turned out to be, and I decided to scrap what I had as a presentation and come to you about the two issues. One, that they added the three-year 2% onto a salary proposal that never went through the process. 3953 was never mentioned anywhere in the process. The public didn't have a chance to speak to it either. The second was the emotion, which was made to add the 3%. When, after the meeting, I went and asked the city paralegal, how could you do that? And the answer was, read Robert's Rules of Order and the state statute, which I did. I read both. State statute says you can do pay increases. I already knew that. I didn't have to run at the state statute. The second part of that was that you could make a motion, you could make the motion, but the rules of order that you made, you were in violation of that. I've got the section here, which I'd like to read to you. After a main motion has been made and before the question has been stated by the chair, the member may quickly rise and live without any explanation, comma, and information suggest, or one or more modifications in the motion, which at this point may make, the maker can accept or reject as he wishes. Application of this method should generally be limited to minor changes about which there is unlikely to be a difference of opinion. I don't think that was true about the 3%, the 2% for three years. I don't think it qualified under that section of Robert Rules of Order.
Let me just stop you one second. Now, we received a letter from your attorney, it looks like.
Bob Louventhal?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you get the response from our city attorney?
Probably two to three weeks later, yes.
Okay. Alright, go ahead.
I don't think it addressed it. Didn't address either of those issues. It said they could make a motion. I'm not going to debate with the attorney. I'm not going to do that.
I'm not going to answer a legal question without her advice.
So, was that the section in the Roberts Rules that your people were citing to me?
I don't see any, I apologize, I'm sick today. I don't see any violation of Roberts Rules, and we did receive a letter on September 10th, 2019, and you didn't cite any issues with Roberts Rules of Order in that letter. You stated that there were some errors in the minutes. Those were then corrected. I then responded to that letter. This is the first time that you brought that to my attention, and I do not believe it's a violation.
Are you saying I can't bring it up now?
I'm not saying you can't. There was a public hearing on this matter.
Why are you reading something that you know is not what I'm talking about today?
There was a public hearing on the matter, and you did not speak at that meeting as well. My understanding-
That's an interesting point you made in the letter. So, I would come and argue about the 53 and 54 when you added the three, three years of two? What difference does that make? I had a conflict that night. So, does that mean I'm not interested in it?
I don't believe that it's a violation of Roberts Rules.
Well, then cite to me how you can do, what's wrong with this citation I just read you? It's out of this book.
I've read the applicable statutes in Roberts. I also talked to the attorney at the League of Municipalities.
Well, my initial response was to sue you, and you know what my attorney told me? Prepare to spend $15,000 to $20,000, because the city has unlimited resources, and they're not going to change their mind. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Item number 10, Liquor Licenses. We have none. Item number 11, Ordinances for Adoption Third Reading. 11A, Ordinance Number 3966, Request to Annex Sanitary Improvement District Number 67, Normandy Hills, applicant city of Bellevue. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District Number 67, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we table 11A and bring it back up on the first meeting in February.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to table until February 4th. Any questions, comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
11A is tabled until February 4th. Thank you. 11B, Ordinance Number 3970, Request to Annex Sanitary Improvement District 242, Cedar View, applicant city of Bellevue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate, lying within Sanitary and Improvement District Number 242, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We table 11B to February 4th.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister, to table 11B until February 4th, 2020. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. 11C, Ordinance Number 3977, An Ordinance to Amend Section 2-28 of the Bellevue City Code pertaining to executive sessions. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend Section 2-28 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to executive sessions of the city council to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve ordinance 3977.
I'll second it.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook. Any further discussion? Councilman Shannon?
You did a number of changes on 11CD and D1. I'm going to ask that we be allowed to make a motion to reopen public hearing. I've been contacted by numerous constituents who say they want to comment on the changes that came in on this, and by one constituent that says that they have critical information we have to hear before we vote. So, I'm curious enough to open this up and let the public come tell us what is so critical that we need to hear right now.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Stinson, to open it up for public hearing. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask to be clear from legal counsel. I believe that we had a public hearing on the second reading, and then we carried over to the third reading when we would normally vote and had a second public hearing. And then, in that second public hearing, we got some additional information from Councilman Cook that was very informative. And so, we then opened a third public hearing and got input from the public, a number of whom changed their opinion, and so this would then be, in my count, the fourth public hearing that we will be doing. And this is also the fourth reading, well, will be, because we had the third reading and an additional public hearing already. So, we're giving this plenty of scrutiny, and is that accurate?
That's accurate. Also, in ordinance 3977, there were no changes from the last meeting. That was at public hearing, and then the only changes in 3978 were based off of comments at the last public hearing, and there were no substantial changes.
And all of the, virtually all the changes were good input from the public and that we made note of, included and incorporated? So, it wasn't like the changes were something we did on our own, but they were from the public.
That's a fair statement, yes.
And they were very good changes, which we all accepted. Okay, thank you very much.
But I'm always willing to hear from my constituents anytime they want to talk to us.
I'm not objecting. I'm just clarifying for the record how much scrutiny we have already had and incorporated the public.
Have any council members received any changes from the public, requested changes from the public? I haven't received anything that, other than maybe they wanted to talk again, but.
Mayor, I haven't received anything that I can recall, but I'd like to make some minor amendment to 3978. So, I don't know I can make that motion at the time. I also feel we've had plenty of open public hearing on this. I would be willing to listen to only public hearing on the last changes that we made, and I think they're minor. I don't want to rehash this thing of what we've been going through. If our attorney wants to discuss or mention the three or four things of minor changes, and someone wants to come up and respond to that, I'm open for that. But I don't want to sit here. We've had three hearings. So, that's my feeling. I'm only going to support it if it is going to be only conversation to the changes that were made from the last meeting to today, and I would ask the city attorney if this would pass, or we would agree to this, then she would mention the three or four things that have been changed.
I could certainly do that if that's the motion and that's the vote. There were no changes to 3977, and that's what's on the floor right now. There were no changes to that.
So, did you have, Councilman Cook, did you have a motion to make some changes to 3978? Maybe we should take that first?
Well, what I was going to do, I have no problem addressing 3977 with a vote. And then we, if people don't want to have discussion on 3977, let's just take a vote to approve or not to approve, and we get down to 3978, or is that working backwards?
I think that would be the appropriate thing to do, because there's no changes in 3977. It also doesn't talk about removal from office, which I know is the big issue. That's addressed in 3978. This is just executive sessions, and there were no changes. So, I guess my opinion would be that we move forward on 3978. You vote however you want to vote, and then we address public hearing on 3978, your amendment prior to going to public hearing, so that they know what it is, and then move forward.
So, if we're going to vote now on opening up 3977, just blanket, open it up. I will not support it.
I'll call the questions.
Alright.
To open up on all three, and let's hear what the public has to say.
With no limitations and just for 3977?
For all three.
His motion was to open up all three, so you would be voting to open up all three, 3977, 3978, and Policy Resolution 35, without any restriction.
We don't have a big crowd here tonight. Okay, any questions on that? Please vote.
We've got three yes votes and three no votes with Mr. Cook, Mr. Preister, and Ms. Welch voting no.
Mayor votes no?
Motion carries, or denied, sorry, right?
So, anybody have a motion on 3977? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Preister, seconded by Cook, to approve 3977. Any questions on that? Please vote.
We've got four yes votes, two no votes, with Mr. Stinson and Mr. Shannon voting no.
Thank you. Item 11D, Ordinance Number 3978, An Ordinance to Amend Article 4, Chapter 2 of the Bellevue City Code by adding a new section, 2-208 regarding removal of elected officials for misconduct. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend Article 4, Chapter 2 of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section 2-208 regarding removal of an elected official for misconduct and other sanctions, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Mayor, so I'd-
Councilman Burns?
I'd move that we, since this is the controversial ordinance, and it talks about removal of elected official, I would move that we open this ordinance up for public hearing regarding, the way Councilman Cook said, is regarding the most recent changes. And then if we could cover those changes.
Councilman Preister?
Mayor, before we were able to do that, we need to have something on the floor, so I would move to approve ordinance number 3978.
Thank you.
That too.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Now, we have a motion by Burns to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to 3978, and in, in 3978, it talks about removal from committee assignments and/or loss of seniority. I would like that to be changed in that whole paragraph to state removal of committee assignments, task force assignments, as a city, also the city council president and loss of seniority. So, I basically want to add task force and to be removed. If the person was a council president, it would be an option that we could remove that person as a council president.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, motion by Cook, seconded by Preister, with the changes discussed by Councilman Cook. Are there any questions on those?
I think that, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I think the cleanest way to do this, we have an amendment on the floor. Councilman Burns made a motion to open up for public hearing with the limitations that he specified. I think it would be best if, oh yeah, you're right, there was no second.
Well.
There is now.
Amendment on the floor first, so the public knows what they can talk about if it goes that far.
Well, and I also have some, I'd also like to make amendments to it. I just don't want everything to get confusing. So, should I go ahead and do that now?
I think the cleanest way to do it is to state what you want your amendments to be, so it's known to the public. Let the public then come address everything in the ordinance with the statements that are suggested to be amended. Let's address that, and then we can readdress the amendments after the public talks, if you vote it to public hearing. I think that's probably the cleanest way before we vote on an amendment prior to the public hearing.
Alright, so go ahead and move for my amendments, correct?
Yes.
Now, well, I would move that anywhere that it is stated in ordinance number 3978-
uh, discussing remove, well, where it says, uh, r, removal of office or removal of elected official. Um, gosh, I really don't know how to word this. That we would replace it with with sanction, or just remove the wording of anything discussing removal of elected official.
I would second that.
We we already have a motion and an amendment on the floor. We can't have two amendments. So, as legal counsel just identified, we.
So, let's vote on the public hearing.
He's just making the public aware of what he's doing. So, we don't need a second at this time, because we have to vote on them one at a time.
Correct, let's, uh, vote on the public hearing. The motion was by.
Burns.
Burns, seconded by Stinson. Only on the changes from the last hearing is my understanding. Let's vote on that.
Right.
And then, we, now, the public is aware of what proposed amendments are, and those can be discussed as well.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Stinson, to open the public hearing with those limitations. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Okay, motion was made, uh, by Burns, seconded by Stinson, to open the public hearing. All voted yes. So, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here? And again, that will only be on the items on the changes, correct?
That's my understanding, and I think there was a request from me to state those changes in ordinance three nine seven eight, and then the policy resolution that's attached. Is that what you want me to do?
Yes.
Okay. So, looking at, um, ordinance three nine seven eight, which was revised on November twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, um, in the first full paragraph after section two dash two oh eight, the only thing that was changed was adding, um, in red of Bellevue, um, just clarification of the city. In A, um, there were suggestions at the last hearing about what if somebody is conducting business in the city and they're not actually a resident? Um, or what if it's a staff member or, uh, member of administration filing a complaint? So, those ideas were taken into consideration and added in, um, paragraph A. Um, going down in paragraph A one, um, that deletion was simply, it was just restating what was in A, so it's just a format change there. Um, no substantive changes. And then scrolling down to, um, section six, which I think is on the third page, um, there was a suggestion of what if the city attorney has a conflict, or what if, um, I'm the one that brought the charge? Uh, so, that was taken into consideration. If the city attorney is the one bringing the charge, the city shall contract another attorney to be the acting city attorney for the purpose of that hearing. Um, there was also discussion in section eight, um, regarding what if the hearing extends past ten o'clock? Will the public be notified? Um, and so, we did add that provision in there as well. Um, paragraph ten, there were just some format changes. And, um, that's it there. And then, in policy resolution thirty five, the only changes were punctuation and some grammar as suggested by Mr. Modery, who is at the, at the podium right now. Um, there were no other substantive changes or any other changes minus the punctuation um, and grammar in policy resolution thirty five.
Okay, thank you. And we will, uh, try to keep this a little organized. Uh, we'll give the speaker five minutes to speak. And, um, if we can hold our questions till the end, uh, we're not interrupting their time, so. Mr. Modery?
Thank you, thank you, counsel. My name is Jim Modery, twelve seven Rebecca Court. Excuse me, in Bellevue, everybody's getting cold or something. I agree with all the amendments that have been made, or the revisions that have been made to, uh, ordinance thirty nine seventy eight and, uh, policy resolution thirty five. Uh, I agree with Councilman Cook's proposed amendment uh, on the, uh, removal from committee assignment section. And, uh, I agree with the proposed amendment by Councilman Burns. And to clarify that, uh, to make sure I understand, uh, what what you have in mind there. If if we removed, uh, the removal from office parts from this, uh, the title of the ordinance would be, uh, adding a new section two oh eight regarding sanction of an elected official for misconduct. And then, you'd strike out other sanctions, and then to provide for effective date. And then, the title of section two oh eight would be sanction of elected official for misconduct. Uh, and then, the wording of it, any member of Bellevue Ca, city councilor, mayor, uh, hereafter referred to as elected official of the city of Bellevue may be sanctioned for misconduct. And I think that would be the end of that sentence. You'd remove or receive other sanctions as outlined, you'd strike be removed from office. And then, uh, the last part of that paragraph would be sanctioned shall be initiated as follows, so you'd strike out including removal from office for misconduct. And I think the only other cha- changes that would be need to made, be made then would be to remove the, uh, complete sections on removal, paragraph D, uh, and then the vacancy provisions as well, XI and XII. Would that, I think that would.
Yeah, and I was just trying to clean it up, so I didn't have to move a motion and state all that specifically. So, yeah, but that's where I'm coming from. So, anything that's talking about removal, so, I mean, the ordinance completely changed to just discussing, truly addressing that there'd only be sanctions put on other council members, and anything talking about a remove, the removal of elected official would be removed.
Okay.
And then, that very last paragraph would just be completely removed. So, and I can clarify some of that as well.
I, I just wanted to clarify that.
Needed.
As I stated before, I agree with that, uh, sanctions by the council done in public forums, but not, not going for removals. Thank you. Thank you.
Public hearing is open for anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. Um, so, I used to, I am one of the constituents that asked for public hearing to be reopened, so I, but I will, of course, um, limit my comments to what's been, um, uh, to, to this public hearing, so only then, the new, uh, additions. Um, I have sent a letter to Councilman Burns that I would like to ask him to submit into the record and read for me, since it will not, it is more encompassing that my comments will be here. Um, the conflict, um, the, the one thing I would like to comment on is the conflict of, uh, interest issue with the city attorney and a, appointing a outside attorney. After last week's hear, or two weeks ago hearing, um, both, uh, the city attorney and I, and I believe other representatives were on the news saying that they had personally been witnesses of this harassment or had been reported to. Um, that creates huge conflict of interest for, um, anyone who would then be prosecuting on, uh, uh, an accused harasser or sitting as a witness in judgment of those, um, of those issues. And anyone with a conflict of interest that severe should be excluded from the process. So, I don't think that the conflict of interest, um, the way it's, uh, tried to be limited here is adequate at all for the due process, process rights of an accused person. And that is the extent of my comments on the changes.
Just a question. Centino?
Sure.
Would you guys be okay? I know that you do, you did type up a, a thing to to speak. And truly, I just think it'd be better if it came from you. Um, and can I move? Can we allow her to just shoot?
No, without a motion.
That with.
She can submit it.
So.
She can submit it.
I just feel more comfortable because it is you, um, if that's okay. Um, but I would move, uh, that we do allow Mrs. Centino to read her typed up remarks um, that she has prepared.
I, I would second a motion to do that.
So.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Shannon, to allow Ms. Centino to read her letter in record.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Cook?
I'm just going to tell you, I'm not going to support this. She has been to every hearing to speak. She has sent emails, she could have sent it as an email for us to read it, to be aware of it. So, if we need to discuss it or consider it, it could have been done that way. If we make an exception, we're going to have people lining up, and we'll make an exception for me, for me, for me, and for me. She has sent us emails. The city attorney, a city attorney has sent responses, and she had an opportunity to send that to us where we could read it as an email and digest it. She's bringing something on us, I don't think it's fair, in the sense that you've had many of opportunities. This has been going on for two months. In the last two hearings, we've had three public hearings. And I think she's had an a, ample, ample amount of time to address all her concerns. And she could have sent this information to us in a letter as an e-
I assure you, I wouldn't be here tonight if I felt my concerns were addressed appropriately.
And you guys.
You could have sent this as an email, you sent us an email to us, and our city attorney responded. We could have read that email last night or sometime this weekend.
And.
Ms. Centino, are your concerns something that would impact our vote tonight?
Yes.
Then I personally want to hear them.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor. Can find it. By Burns, seconded by Shannon, to allow Ms. Centino to read her, her rec, her letter into the record.
Can I be heard?
Yep.
My only issue with the motion on the floor right now is that the original motion to open it up for public hearing limited it only to the changes that were made. Um, Ms. Centino's letter expands, um, well beyond the changes that were made. Um, and I do not believe that it would be fair to open it up for public hearing for Ms. Centino and not it up on all matters, and not reopen it on additional matters. Additionally, the items raised in the letter were not presented to council prior to tonight. Um, and they regurgitate everything that has been said at the last three public hearings. Um, so, I would have a concern opening it up further tonight.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Please vote.
This is a motion to open it up. This is a public hearing again, so, uh, Ms. Centino can read her letter.
Letter under.
Thank you.
It's Centino, but.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's all right.
We have three yes votes and three no votes with Mr. Cook, Mr. Preister, and Ms. Welch voting no.
Mayor votes no?
Motion fails.
Then I have a question for Ms. Centino.
Yes, sir.
The conflict that you spoke about.
Yes.
Okay. Would that be a conflict of interest that would preclude someone from voting on this ordinance? Because they've declared that, uh, they have a dog in the fight, so to say?
According to Black's Law Dictionary, a conflict of interest is any time you have a personal interest in the outcome. Doesn't require fiduciary interest. Uh, Councilwoman Welch, uh, her, when she wrote her, her statement, said that she was personally victimized by the accused harasser, which is the subject of this proposed ordinance. Therefore, she has a personal interest in the outcome of this proposed ordinance, and she should recuse herself from voting because she has a conflict of interest. I think that the council should really consider seeking outside legal advice before they move forward to the, with this ordinance, no matter what side of this you're on. This is, and that, that's my opinion, but the conflict of interest to anyone who might be a witness, including President Cook, because he has been reported to, he, it, it is, it flows out of this process. So, it would be impossible to avoid.
Okay. Bree, would you respond, please?
Yeah, according to the conflict disclosures, um, this would not rise to the level of a conflict where any member would need to abstain. That being said, based on your argument, the member, um, that is the, um, alleged harasser would also need to abstain from a vote tonight. So, I think that that's important to note, it wouldn't just be under your theory, the alleged victim. It would also be the alleged harasser. Um, so, I think that that's important to note. Uh, I do not believe that there's a conflict of interest that arises, um, for voting for this ordinance. Any conduct that was witnessed or done in the past is not subject to this ordinance. The behavior would only be from the effective date going forward. So, Ms. Welch's statement or the comments that Mr. Cook, um, Councilman Cook stated, um, wouldn't be subject to your hearing in the future, because it's just from that date forward.
So, they are not a driving force in this proposed ordinance, then?
I don't understand your question.
Are these complaints of harassment, all of this that was brought up the last public hearing, no longer a driving force?
Well, it absolutely is, but under your theory, the accused, um, harasser would also need to abstain, um, I, but I do not believe it arises to that level of a conflict.
And this is a reason why I think it would be a good idea to seek outside legal counsel. That would be an independent evaluation of what the legal ramifications would be for the city and for the council, reducing liability. It should be a primary function of this city council, and, uh, that is, that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
She does raise a valid concern. We've already been in the newspapers in September over an illegal vote. I don't want to get there again.
I, I would, uh, I mean, just listening to that logic, the, the perpetrator or harasser that, uh, where these are coming from would fall into that same category. So, you want to kick two people out? We can't, we can't do that, so.
I don't believe it arises to the level of a conflict, um, outlined in the, um, conflict statutes for elected officials. Uh, it's not a conflict, I don't see any issue with this vote, and I'm not worried about pending litigation if this is challenged.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward?
Hi, my name's Todd Santoro, one six zero six Camp Gifford. So, we're basically in our fourth reading now, correct? Anybody? Um, you guys have kind of torn our city apart. All kinds of finger pointing, all kinds of grief for us to finally come down, which I do appreciate what you said, Mr. Burns, but to make this just about sanctions and not about removing somebody. Not real impressive. Not a great show. So, we've gotten to the point that the people in the newspapers are laughing at us because our city councilors can't decide where to live, can't decide when to vote, can't put through a process in order to discipline yourselves, when really what you should have done was turn around and say, this is a process we'd like to do, voters. You're our boss. We're going to put this out there on the next election, let you vote for it, and then we will obey your rules. Kind of embarrassed. It's, it's disappointing what you guys have done.
Thank you, public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. A motion to approve, but we've got some amendments that council members, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make another statement. Um, at our last council meeting, I mentioned several instances where an elected official made, has made vulgar, inappropriate, threatening, and sexual nature comments to city employees. I did not mention the name of the elected official, and I did not mention the name of the city employees. Later, in the same council meeting, I did state all these comments were made by one elected official. Last Wednesday, November twenty seventh, Councilmember Pat Shannon held a press conference to announce his intentions to file a recall against Councilmember Welch. In an article in the local paper, uh, it stated, Mr. Shannon says, Monday morning, I'm going to file a recall petition to give the voters of Ward Four a chance to put an end to the city council problem. A chance to put an end to the city council problem. In another article by a local TV station, it mentions that Councilmember Pat Shannon claims recalling Councilmember Welch would make no need for this ordinance. So, would make no need for this ordinance. Since Councilmember Shannon has made statements about a recall would put an end to the city council problem and make no need for these ordinances, I felt it was necessary for me to state that Councilmember Kathy Welch is not the elected official that made the inappropriate statements listed by me in my statement that I read at our last council meeting. Inappropriate behavior by an elected official needs to be addressed in a timely and effective manner, way. Uh, as a council member, it is my duty to protect our employees. Uh, as a council member, it is my duty to protect our employees and the city from this type of behavior. These employees live in our community, they are neighbors, we see them in church, we see them at the grocery store, we see them at schools, and we see them in the parks. They are the same people who are driving our snowplows, driving our fire trucks, our police cars, keeping our city safe. They work for our city. Therefore, I am supporting this ordinance in order to protect our employees and the city and give us a means to address and quickly take action should these kinds of behavior continue. I sincerely hope we never have to use these ordinances. And it is unfortunate, we are faced with this, but at this time, we have no way of addressing these issues and they need to stop. Thank you.
Councilwoman Welch.
I'd also like to read a statement. Despite efforts of another city council member to intimidate and harass me into voting no on this ordinance, I am voting yes.
Thank you. Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. I will note that each time I speak, I try to be polite and thank the people recognizing me and to thank the staff who do good work and to appreciate people because I think they deserve appreciation. But everybody doesn't respond that way. And I was very disappointed about the information that was in the things that Councilman Cook read. And for anybody who isn't familiar with all of those statements, even though some were printed in the newspaper, I suggest you go on YouTube and bring up that meeting. And you can even scroll all the way forward and find those comments. We're only here because these types of behaviors are totally inappropriate and should not be occurring at all. And after three years, we have no opportunity to do any discipline, to do any consequence whatsoever. We have little option. And that's unfortunate, and none of us wants to be here because of it or to do this. But we are following state law. Everything, we have been guided through this, through both state officials as well as our own legal counsel. And at this point, I just wanna say to the four other council members who all repudiated all of this action, including Councilwoman Welch and Councilman, uh, uh, Thomas Burns and Councilman Bob Stinson and the person who actually read them, Councilman Paul Cook, I appreciate that you have repudiated and said you do not accept those things and that those things are totally inappropriate and should not be done by anyone, especially someone in a position of authority. We need to be held to a higher standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions?
I'd like to say one more comment.
Councilman Cook.
This has been very hard, but I wanna thank everybody. We've had a lot of emails, a lot of letters, a lot of phone calls, and a lot of speakers. And, and, and in particular, the, the people that come to these meetings and speak, uh, what you say, we all listen to. It takes courage to come down to this meeting, if you have even the time in your day, and to stand in front of us and make a statement on any subject that we talk about. So I, I wanna know, I want everybody to know, we got a lot of information from the public. We got tons of information from the public. And we saw where many of the suggestions have been put into the ordinances. So thank you, and I hope it continues. But I, I just wanted to tell everybody, thank you for taking your time, however you communicated to us, thank you for doing it, it meant a lot. Uh, this is a very important issue for the city and your input was very valuable.
What's your amendment? Thank you. Councilman Burns.
Okay, so I am gonna read, um, Mrs. Centino, um, did send me a typed up thing. I do wanna s- do wanna read it. I said I would, um-
I don't think we can read that.
Are we not? Do it, but I can't say it as a councilman or enter it, can we enter it, at least into the public record? Okay, well, I would like to enter it into the public record. And then as far as just dis- discussion from me, um, I, you know, a lot of the, the behaviors that have been stated that's been happening, uh, I'm not, I'm not for that. Um, I don't condone that behavior. Councilman Price is right. You know, we as elected officials and leaders of the city are held to a higher standard. Really what this boils down to, though, is that us as a council, I just don't believe in the idea that we can remove another elected official sitting on this council with us. I think that's wrong, um, and I think that's really up to the people, it's not up to me, it's not my decision, and it's not my call.
Thank you. So I think, uh, Councilman Cook had a amendment.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment that in ordinance thirty-nine seventy-eight. So it'd be ten C. Where it talks about removal from committee assignments and or loss of seniority. I'd like, where it would be appropriate in that paragraph or anywhere in this document to include, to not only, to have committee assignments, task force assignments, council president assignment and the loss of seniority mentioned.
Okay, so we have the motion by Cook, seconded by Price. To amend, this for the amendment, um, to, uh, those items state, just stated by Councilman Cook. Any questions on that amendment? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Councilman Burns.
All right, so I'd move that we amend ordinance number three-nine seventy-eight. And should I just go through everything or should I just basically talk about anywhere that does say, uh, remove, removal of office or talks about removal of office? I think we should basically replace that with sanctions. Um, for example, I think we should just take out any verbiage that mentions removal from office or, like, for example, paragraph D, we should remove that, um, and then in here where it says elected official of the city of Bellevue may be removed from office, I think we should just replace all that wording with sanctioned. I, that's not, is that clear? I don't know.
I think that's clear, I don't think you need to go through every word.
Okay, I just-
You would remove ten D altogether because it's removal from office and then anywhere where it addresses removal from office, it would just reference sanctions, um, and there would be no indication of removal. I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I think everybody knows.
So what would the sanction be? Do we have to describe that or?
I, I think, um, Mr. Burns, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the amendment would be, uh, basically to go all the way up through ten C. So sanctions could be written reprimand, verbal reprimand, or removal from a committee, that paragraph.
Yeah.
Um, so those could be the sanctions that would be addressed, but not removal from office.
Right, so I just wanna basically remove the removal from office as being a sanction. So, yeah.
Okay, motion by Burns, seconded by Stinson. Um, to amend thirty-nine seventy-eight. As they just discussed, removing any possibility of removing an elected official. Any further questions? Please vote.
We have four yes votes and two no votes with Mr. Cook and Mr. Price voting no.
So that, did that pass?
Yeah.
Got a second, so go ahead. Councilman Cook.
Okay, well, the vote is four to two, so removal is being removed from the ordinance.
Stricken, yep. Let's call the question and do the vote.
Yeah, so we had, um, Price and Burns on the original. As, and then it would be as amended.
Good. Uh, please vote.
We've got five yes votes and one vote with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution, let's see, eleven D-one, which is, uh, approve amended policy resolution thirty-five regarding principles of conduct and decorum. Susan, please read the le- resolution.
Do we have the resolution? A resolution to approve amended policy resolution thirty-five regarding principles of conduct and decorum and to provide for the effective date.
Thank you. Need a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I got a question, I'll make a motion. Bree, with the last vote, will there need to be revisions made to this?
I don't believe there are. The policy resolution thirty-five only addresses sanctions and references two-dash-two-oh-eight. There's no, um, language in here regarding removal from office.
I'll make a motion, we approve the amendment to the policy resolution thirty-five regarding principles of conduct and decorum.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Price.
Correct, it just references sanctions and then references back to section two-dash-two-oh-eight, which is the ordinance that was just approved with the removal removed.
Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven E. Ordinance number three-nine-eight-one, an ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to recent annexations. Susan, would you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to amend section nine-dash-three of the Bellevue Municipal Code to provide for revised city council ward boundaries, to repeal section nine-dash-three of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing, to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Do we have a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number thirty-nine eighty-one.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Price. Any questions, comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. There are none. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number three-nine-eight-four. Request to amend sections five dot two-two, five dot two-three, and five dot two-four. City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding permitted uses. Could you read that ordinance, please, Susan?
An ordinance to amend sections five point two-two, five point two-three, and five point two-four. Ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, Bellevue zoning ordinance related to permitted uses in the BG, General Business District, BGM, Metropolitan General Visi- Business District, and BGH, Heavy General Business District, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. Councilman Shannon.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we suspend the rules and hold the public hearing and vote on this item tonight. We've got a large employer that we're not allowed to name right now, bringing a lot of jobs into Bellevue. They're at the end of their due diligence period, and we need to get this change made for them.
So I need a second.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Price, to waive the three readings and open the public hearing and vote on this tonight regarding ordinance thirty-nine eighty-four. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against ordinance number thirty-nine eighty-four? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions, comments? Please vote.
Uh, we need a motion.
Oh, got, oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns, to approve thirty-nine eighty-four. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Takes us to item fifteen, resolutions. And, uh, this is fifteen A, resolution number two-zero-one-nine-dash-forty, authorizing the submission of the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the mayor to sign. And we would like to open this up for public hearing to see if there's any, uh, buddy in the public that wa- would like to talk. Regarding resolution number two-zero-one-nine-dash-four-zero, public hearing. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion. Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve resolution number two-oh-one-nine-dash-forty.
I'll second that.
Motion by Price, seconded by Welch, any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Moves us to sixteen, sixteen A, approval of the Veterans Memorial Project at Bellevue Cemetery and to use community betterment funds of sixteen thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars to pay for the project. Councilman Shannon.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve item sixteen A.
Second.
I'd also like to comment on sixteen A, uh-
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Holly and the Bellevue Cemetery Committee have worked for years on this item. Uh, I was recently challenged by the newspaper to take this up and champion this item. We're, we're bringing it in, we're getting it done. Mr. Wills, who's a regular attendee here, has been working on this item for the last two years. Uh, Jason Hoteling in the, uh, cemetery is, uh, since he's taken over, has worked hard on this. And the administration has backed us, and we are finally getting a memorial to the twenty-seven to thirty Civil War veterans buried in our cemetery. And I think this is very fitting and very appropriate and something Bellevue can be very proud of. And a lot of people have put a lot of years into bringing this to the table. So this is a really good thing for our community, and I'm happy to see us focusing on things for the community again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more? Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. A question and then a, a comment. Uh, this shows where there's a space in the cemetery for it. And I see the listing of the names of the Civil War veterans. Is that going to be on granite? Is it going to be on like one of the historical markers like we have? Could I just understand a little more about what the memorial will actually be?
It'll be a granite, uh, like a headstone, um, made out of granite with the, like, the white etchings on it, so. There's no moving of the veterans or anything, so it'll be in a special section for them. We know where all of them are, so we can reference where their, their- We know where all of them are, so we can reference where their grave sites are. But it should be a pretty nice-looking memorial.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, that was what I wanted to know.
It's almost just under six foot and about, what was it, three, a little over three feet wide?
Okay, good. And it's certainly deserving, and I too appreciate the work that went into it. I too received a copy of the letter that we all received, and I think it's to the city administrator and the mayor's credit that they took that letter and they brought it forward, and they followed through with it, and they brought it to us in this meeting. So it was a very quick turnaround after Mr. Holly sent all of us the letter, and I do appreciate him and all of the effort from the cemetery committee and from the cemetery workers. I think we have people very dedicated to this. It's unfortunate it took this long, but kudos and thanks to the mayor and to the administrator for making it happen quickly now.
Thank you. Any more comments, discussion? We have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 17, administration reports. We'll enter those into the record. Are there any questions or comments on those from the council? Seeing none, I'll put those in the record, and there are no closed sessions, so I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by
Second.
Second by Burns.
Yep.
Please vote. Thank you for coming out.